Buddy, welcome to the regular Daily City meeting on Monday, July 11th, 2022. Pursuant to government code, section 54953E. Members of the Daily City Council staff participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/dailycityvideomeetings. The city's agenda website at www.dailycity.org/agendas or on local channel 27 on Comcast. I'd like to go ahead. Next thing is to do the pledge of allegiance. So there we go. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have the city clerk conduct a roll call, please?
Mr. Buenaventura.
Present.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod.
Present. Thank you, Ms. City Clerk. First thing on our agenda, our presentations from DCPLA grants from their annual St. Patrick's Day celebration. Fund the Need event at Gordon L. King Memorial Grant to the Daily City Public Library. We have Director Amy Hayes, the Daily City Public Library Associates. So I'll hand it over.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. DCPLA is pleased to present a grant of $12,001 to the Daily City Public Libraries. This grant is 100% the result of support from our members and were raised at our annual St. Patrick's Day luncheon and is also a gift from one of our members. We appreciate the support of our members and the community so that we can continue to enhance the offerings available at the public libraries. A grant recommended by a DCPLA member in the amount of $6,000 in honor of Gordon L. King is to support the summer program, which includes the summer learning challenge, storytimes at all the branches, performers and special events, crafts and activities all throughout the summer that go through August 31st. And $6,001 was raised at the St. Patrick's Day luncheon and is to be allocated as follows. $1,137 for the book display furniture at the Westlake Branch, $3,000 for the Lucky Day collection at the Westlake Branch, and $1,864 for Children's Activity Tower at the John Daly Branch. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Amy. Thank you again to DCPLA for the work that you do for our community. I'm very, very honored and appreciative for the work that you all do. And I see that we have members amongst my peers that want to go ahead and speak. So councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Ms. Amy. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you.
Always a pleasure, not just because you're always giving, right? But it's about the community and that these are great, great. I like the allocation where you broke it down so that people know that where the money's going is 100%. Like when you did the luncheon, and by the way, it was fabulous entertainment. Everything was good. And it benefits. It truly benefits our community. And now that we've been able to expand some hours and hire a couple of assistants or whatever, we can only get better, right? Can only get better. So thank you to the board. Thank you to everyone. Please convey my thanks. And to those that donated the money, those that attended the lunch and gave generous, you know, from out of their pockets, the love and their time. So they're truly committed to our libraries and our community. So this is another exciting night. You always begin our meeting with such happy notes. So this is going to continue, I'm sure. So thank you very much, Ms. Amy, and thank you for all you do as well. Thank you.
And thank you all for all your support as well.
Thank you. And it only costs $20 for people to join the library. Just a reminder, if anybody hasn't renewed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a councilmember, Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say such an amazing job with the annual luncheon and to see how much impact you all continue to do for our libraries is tremendous. And so thank you, thank you, thank you again for all the hard work and just how you all continue to give back to our libraries continuously. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. I know that we see a person with their hand up, an attendee, Stephen. I don't know if this for this agenda item, should we?
Yes, let me check on that.
Okay.
So we have one raised hand from Sin Thompson. I will allow you to talk in the meeting if it's for this agenda item. You will have two minutes to speak. So just give me a second to unmute you.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
I'm sorry, I guess I was. I've never done this before, so I was sort of practicing. So I apologize to everyone.
No problem. We can come back to you if you have comments later in the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're good to go, Mayor.
Thank you, Stephen. All right. All right, moving to the approval minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting, regular meeting of June 27, 2022?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any? Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Yes, I'd like to pull item number, I believe it's down here, number 14.
14.
And number 15. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Not a problem.
That's good news.
Okay.
With the exception of items 14 and 15, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. So we have a first. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so let's go down to number 14, accepting the Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, Grant Funds for Drug Detection K-9.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I'll be actually, I guess I'll read the council meeting agenda report. So staff recommends accept the appropriate award funds from the federal 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, which is a JAG grant totaling $17,024, and funds will be used to purchase K-9 certified and drug detection. And that's basically the whole presentation. So if you have any, sorry, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
No, thank you, Mr. Musman. I see that councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni has her hand up, so go right.
Good thing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Captain Musman. I just wanted to say that it's great that you guys apply for grants and give recognition that you guys are always looking into grants to enhance what we need within our PD and that it doesn't always come out of funding so that the public knows that PD is constantly looking for memorial funds or any other kind of grants that are out there to help us in protecting our community and really appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and thank you, Mayor.
I make a motion that we approve item number 14.
So moved. Second.
Again, I see councilmember Justin Manalo. Before we vote, would you like to share thoughts?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say it has been continuously where the DCPD has been doing these types of grants over the course of many years. And so I can see why it's on the consent agenda because they have always looked out for these types of grants to support other work. So thank you very much.
All right, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so item 14 passes. Agenda item number 15, accepting and appropriating Cal Recycle SB 1383 Local Assistance Grant Program.
I can take this one, Mayor. Thank you. So this agenda item is to accept and appropriate a $154,000 grant from the statewide recycling agency called Cal Recycle to help the city implement SB 1383. And that is that new state law around organic waste to prevent organic waste from ending up in a landfill specifically. As we've talked about this before and we're going to continue to talk about it because it's an unfunded mandate from the state. But we received this large grant from Cal Recycle through a program that is countywide. We're partnered with every city in town and the county as well as the Resource Conservation District. Part of SB 1383 requires that every jurisdiction actually procure compost, which is processed organic waste that was diverted from the landfill. And through this program and our partnership with the Resource Conservation District, they will be basically acting as a compost broker and working with agricultural entities throughout the county to procure compost and then basically spread it on those agricultural lands and range rangelands. So it's a really innovative program and it's why Cal Recycle awarded us these funds. And another part of this agenda item is actually authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement with the Resource Conservation District. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Go ahead, councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just as excited because it is an expensive endeavor, as we all know, to implement it. And I'm sure, Mr. Stolti, you had something to do with the grant. And I'm not sure if Public Works helped you, but whomever it was in the grants, it's very important and to resource some of the monies because I know it's expensive and for us to get to that point with our community. So I know we have a big road ahead, but this is a great step and really appreciate it. And I know it takes a lot of time among all the other duties. So to everyone involved and yourself, Mr. Stolti, really appreciate it. So thank you. It's off to a good start with those grants. You also keep your eyes on grants, I know. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I do want to give kudos to Leilani Ramos because she's been working very hard on this program.
Thank you, Leilani. Appreciate it.
All right, are there any other comments from my colleagues? Well, I just want to say thank you to Leilani and Stephen for taking or finding grants that will provide innovative ways to recycling and having organic waste go into a proper mechanism and then to go into landfills and, you know, try to find ways that are more greener and more efficient. So thank you, Stephen, and thank you, Leilani. All right, so can I get a motion to approve agenda number 15?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we got a first and a second by Pamela Di Giovanni. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Okay. All right, agenda 18, item number 18, proposed increases in service charges, fees and fines for various services, permits, inspections, charges and enforcement costs. And I'll hand it over to Director Tim Nevin.
Good evening, Dr. Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor and councilmembers. For agenda item 18, I'm happy to introduce Finance Deputy Director Abby Vieser to present.
Evening, everybody. Going to go ahead and get the power, a quick PowerPoint up here. All right, is everyone able to see it all right? Yes. Okay, great. So tonight, as Director Nevin mentioned, my name is Abby Vieser and I'll be presenting a quick overview of the user fee update. That's part of the fees that we're presenting tonight as part of the public hearing item. So just kind of to do a quick overview of that. So the agenda for my presentation again is to just kind of do a quick overview of the fee study. Then we'll do a little overview of the cost recovery that came out of it, the fiscal impact for the user fees that we're proposing tonight. And then I'll talk about the next steps for our master fee schedule. So as I mentioned, tonight we're bringing forward a new set of user fees. This is select fees that we had Matrix Consulting Group start studying back in July of 2021. The idea was to do a cost of services study to update what the costs really were of many of the user fees that we were providing to the community. We last looked at these fees in 2013 and 2008. Some were updated in 2013, but some weren't updated since 2008. And we felt it was time to really do a comprehensive analysis of all these fees. The ones we're proposing tonight will go into effect for 2023. Some will go into effect immediately. The more development-related fees will go into effect 60 days after adoption by the city council. The staff report tonight includes an attachment with a full list of all the fees that were studied and the proposed new fees. That's attachment D to the staff report. That attachment, as well as the user fee study that kind of backs up how we got those developed, were posted to the city's internet site as of June 27th to allow folks a little bit of time to review it for tonight's meeting if folks were interested in the public. And just to kind of start into what fees we were studying. We did focus this particular study with Matrix Consulting Group on development-related fees and public safety enforcement fees. And as you can see, development-related fees, there are things such as building permits, encroachment permits, plan review fees. So we were working with the building group, fire, planning, engineering and folks in water, wastewater who had permits. We were also looking at public safety enforcement fees. So this included user fees within administrative services, code enforcement and police. For administrative services here, we're referring to a kind of group of fees. That's the city clerk, finance and utility billing. So this includes things like a water shut-off fee for folks. It includes zoning violations and code enforcement and things like the auto impound fee and police. So these are all the kind of user fees that we decided to kind of do a full analysis on in this study. But I did also want to point out what fees are not included in the study. We felt it was kind of important to be specific in our approach. So program-related fees were not actually included in this review. So recreation and library fees were not included. That's things like, you know, the aquatics program fees, facility and rental fees. And these typically have different cost recovery goals than development-related fees. So we felt it was appropriate to separate those in a later update. And actually, the recreation group has been working on an update to their fees and we anticipate they'll bring some forward potentially early fall. Another set of fees that we did not look at in the study was developer impact fees. So that's the AB 1600 fees and things like super connection fees. These fees are more tied to the future infrastructure of the city versus staff time. And so we felt it was important to do this in, again, a separate study to really look at what the city's infrastructure needs were and how they've changed and then update those fees appropriately. So we'll be looking to do that probably at a later time as well. So just to kind of give you a summary of how the consultants went about doing this study. They called it a bottoms-up approach to cost analysis. So they are basically trying to determine what is the cost of, how much is the city putting into making the services for these fees happen? So they looked at both direct costs and indirect costs. So in terms of direct costs, that meant the consultants actually met with planning staff or engineering staff and asked them how long it takes them to process a plan check or to do things that were involved in that fee. And then they would take the time estimates by position and kind of multiply them by whatever those budgeted salaries and benefits were. We use fiscal year 22 budgeted salaries and benefits for this exercise because that's the year we were doing it in. In addition, they added indirect costs to most of those fees because there's a lot of other time and effort that's put into it. We did have Matrix Consulting Group do an updated cost allocation plan, which helped give us these indirect cost fees. So that was a big part of the project. And so we had costs at the division, department and citywide level that could be applied as needed to the different fees. So then what the consultant came back with was a very detailed fee-by-fee total cost. You can see here they identified the current fee. They identified the total cost using that direct and indirect cost summary method that I talked about. And then they told us what's the surplus and deficit, meaning based on what we're charging now, how much money are we not recovering based on the amount of services and time we're spending on that? So each department kind of could see this. And then they took that and the, actually the consultants put it together in an additional table to kind of give them an even broader sense of, okay, here's your current fee, here's your total cost. What kind of cost recovery do you want to see for each of those fees? You can see in this chart, they have kind of like, if you recommended the fee at the full cost and that's 100% cost recovery, that's the difference in what you were charging before. And the departments could kind of play with the workbooks and see if they wanted less cost recovery, what made sense on a fee-by-fee basis. So that was one of the things the department heads used as they were coming up with what their proposed fee recommendations were. Another important part of what helped make the fee decision was some data that the consultant provided on the different fees in the Bay Area. So our consultant works with a lot of cities in the Bay Area. Our department heads focused on the San Mateo County cities to kind of figure out what the comparison data was best for our city. And so you can see as an example here, for the residential re-roof project, you can see the daily city current fee when you kind of get that permit. You can see what the full cost permit would cost. And then you can see how that compares to other San Mateo County cities. In this case, the full cost is really below most other San Mateo County cities. So the building department felt pretty good about saying, let's just go to full cost recovery because it's been a while and we think it's time to bring that fee up. So this data helped them make that decision. At the same time, there was some data that made them not raise their fees. So in this particular example, the police department could see that our current fee as well as our proposed full cost fee are actually higher than some others in San Mateo County. And so they decided, we're not going to raise this to the full cost. We're going to leave it at the current cost it's at. So it's been $240 for several years and they said we're just going to leave it there because in the market, it's fine. So these are kind of some of the inputs department heads looked at as they were finalizing, as I mentioned, their fees. So just to kind of summarize what came through in all the different fees, I have kind of the department recommendations, first by development-related fees. So you can see here that for the most part, for development-related fees, we felt like 100% cost recovery was the way to go. This was mostly a result of us not increasing the fees in so long. And so there was a lot of room, we felt, to increase the fees to 100%. Now, some fees we looked at were under or overcollecting and we did bring those down. So some fees have gone down, not every fee has gone up. But in this case, on average, the development-related fees were 100% average cost recovery. Now you can see the exception to that is planning. Planning was a little more unique in some of their fees and they felt like they needed to have a little bit lower cost recovery in order to make sure that folks were paying a comparable fee to other jurisdictions. And so they, on average, ended up with 79% cost recovery. So that's kind of what the recommendations are. When you see the details, they are summarized at kind of 100% for the development-related fees. Now, if we look at the public safety enforcement fees, you'll see our cost recovery fees recommendations on average are lower. So again, administrative fees, on average, it was 86% cost recovery. For code enforcement, it was 96% and police was 95%. And this is, again, because these are slightly different fees than the development-related. And so each of these departments, when they worked through their fees, felt like some didn't need to be raised too high and some went down. So that's why you have a little bit lower cost recovery in this section of this type of. And again, all the details on this are in the attachment. So you can kind of see fee-by-fee what cost recovery was for each one. Now to move to the fiscal impact. As part of the user fee study, our consultants came up with kind of an estimate of what they felt our annual, our change in revenue could be based on adopting these fees. So what they did is they said, if the city adopts all the fees at 100% cost recovery and they have the same kind of permit activity and fee activity as they did in fiscal year 2021 because that's the activity they looked at, then they estimated that we could get close to $2.9 million in additional revenue when these fees went to effect. This is a great estimate. We're very excited to see this. However, in finance, as you may remember, we did not adopt that level of fee revenue for fiscal year 2023. In the budget that was adopted on June 13th, the city council meeting, we proposed $1 million in new fee revenue at that time. Now, there's a couple of reasons why we decided that. First, we aren't recommending 100% cost recovery on all the fees and some fees are going down. So we felt like we needed to be a little more conservative to take into account we weren't doing 100% cost. In addition, as I mentioned, some of the fees won't go into effect for a while. The development-related fees, which actually are the largest revenue generating section, will go into effect 60 days after adoption. And that, of course, includes education to the public and getting everything into the system. So we anticipate that we won't start seeing that increase in revenue until at least the second quarter of 2023. So we didn't want to start including too much revenue yet in our estimates. Another thing is we just don't know what the development activity is going to look like in 2023. It could be very different than 2021. So we kind of wanted, again, to be conservative. So we had a chance to kind of suss out what kind of activity there was going to be. And then finally, we did expect that we would be monitoring the revenues as we got all the new fees implemented. We could see more specifically which ones are, you know, giving us more money. And when we did our mid-year kind of review, we could come back to the council and potentially adjust that estimate depending upon what we're seeing with the revenues. So this is why we love the estimate of 2.9 and hopefully we'll see that, especially with another year on. and hopefully we'll see that, especially with another year under our belt with these fees. But we wanted to start smaller in terms of our revenue estimates. So then I want to also talk about next steps. This evening, we'll be doing a public hearing on this item and ideally adopting the proposed fees for twenty twenty three. As I mentioned, staff will then go to implement the fees. We'll have sixty days to wait before we can implement the development related fees. And we'll make sure to educate the public, develop new fees for the website and get the education out there so the community sees what the fees are as we go to implement them. In addition, I think I mentioned the recreation will be looking to update some of their fees. So we anticipate they'll be bringing that as agenda item to the council potentially in the fall. And the third thing I think is really important. The finance department is is looking to make this an annual process. We hope to bring every year to the council the fees through the master fee schedule and potential increases based on kind of what departments see. And the way this is typically done and the way we're recommending is usually use a benchmark by which to increase the fees each year. We're proposing that we do fee increases in line with the COLA increases because much of the user fee study was based on staff time. And so that will kind of indicate what the increases are in those costs. So each year, we anticipate probably like March or April, we bring fee increase ideas to the departments. They look and see what fees they should be increasing or not based on the benchmark. They don't have to increase if they don't think it's a good idea, but they have that option. And then we'll bring it to the council for adoption. And ideally, we bring it before we were doing the budget so that we can, you know, incorporate any of those fee increases into the budget. So that way, like for this fiscal year, in like April and March of twenty twenty three, we bring the fees to the council. They'd be able to adopt them. So they went into effect for July first. And so we get on kind of an annual pattern of having a chance to assess if our fees are in the right place. And so that would be something the finance department is proposing to do once this master fee schedule is kind of adopted this time. And so with that, that's kind of my overview of this fee study and the the fee revisions that we're looking at this evening. In addition, Courtney Ramos, who is a project executive with the Matrix Consulting Group, is with us on the call. So if there are specific questions that she or I can answer, we're here to answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Abby, for your very comprehensive presentation. I see that I have some of my colleagues with their hands up. So Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo your sentiments in regards to this report by Ms. Visa. We've waited a long time. And whenever we've done something in a city, we've wondered, were the fees in line with what the services we have been providing? Because we're not, well, my feeling is we're not in the business to make money. And that's the whole idea behind cost recovery, just enough to break even. And I think that's very important while we provide a service to our citizens in Daly City. I was amazed to see that we haven't done this since two thousand eight and then again in two thousand thirteen. That's two thousand thirteen to twenty two, that's nine, at least nine years. And I'm sure things have changed, so very comprehensive report. I do have a couple of questions, and I'll start off with the good, good things. Ms. Visa, you brought up a question that I was going to bring up, but you answered it. And situations in Daly City, especially for planning, changes. And you had made mention based upon activity, you know, folks getting permits or new construction, development permits. We don't know what that landscape would look like. And subsequently, you know, we may have less work. And I'm glad you brought that up for us to be aware. And equally important is looking over these fees on an annual basis so that we don't have to wait five years. And by doing this, this is going to take extra work amongst staff. And I'm very, very appreciative of that. The other comment I would like to make, did this study include California vehicle code violations in regards to law enforcement? Are we charging enough?
Vehicle code violations.
You know, like running a red light, stop signs, and the comparisons with what other cities charges for infractions? And how are we doing it in that area?
I can answer that if you want, Abby.
Okay.
Oh, okay, Mr.
So, so we did not look at any fines or penalties and specifically not the vehicle code. What we primarily looked at were service-based, time-based things as opposed to, you know, running a red light or, you know, any sort of like fix-it, fix-it type ticket, those types of things. Those are fines and penalties. So they're often set at the discretion of the jurisdiction up into the maximum of the California code. So we did not include any of those.
Okay, well, I think we would be in for a rude awakening if someone can at least look into that and consider it. Whereas, say, a traffic infraction where another city, say, charges a hundred and twenty five dollars, but Daly City only charges fifty. And you had made mention about fix-it tickets, fix-it tickets, just basically to sign off and correct the problem and there's no fine. Some cities will still charge you a fine. So I think that might be an area to look into. I see the interim chief online. He would probably have a comment, but just something I think we should be made aware of. But other than that, excellent report, and I thank you all so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Vesser, Mr. Nevin. And I see Courtney. Yes, excellent job. I like that we're having the master fee schedule as something new that we are adding to. It looks like we're moving forward in the right direction. And to be able to bring you guys on board, Courtney, was a great idea. And I support all this. And I like how, Ms. Vesser, you explained the part about in our June thirteenth budget, how we propose the one million, which is conservative, which is great. Thank you, Mr. Nevin and Ms. Vesser. And that it looks like the two point eight, which is almost two point nine, if we adopt this tonight. And in some fees, like you said, when I was reading the report, some fees don't change, some fees go down to let people know that we're not out to, again, as Councilwoman Sylvester said, we're just, it's about cost recovery. It's not about charging our residents anything extra or putting an undue burden on our staff as well. And I think that's important and to all the department heads. Thank you for participating and putting time in with your staff as well because I know it took time out of your schedule to participate in this, but probably happily participating and seeing something like this go forward, which helps our departments as well and gives a little boost to let them know that we're thinking ahead and that now we will have the master schedule that will be implemented. And I think that's moving forward, and I like that. So Courtney, thanks for working with the city of Daly City. It's a pleasure and really proud that we have Ms. Vesser and Mr. Nevin and our acting chief and everyone. And thank you for being here and participating and giving us your knowledge and being a team member. Really appreciate it. I'm on board and looking forward to the revenue cost recovery at this particular time. Thank you very much to all of you and department heads and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni. We have Vice Mayor Ray Bonator.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although I truly appreciate the the need for cost recovery, I just want to make sure that we don't go to a place where we are not allowing for some who cannot afford the fees. I want to make sure we still have built in some kind of discretion to where it should not be just about cost recovery and the bottom line. I think we exist as a government to provide for the community, but certainly the community who can't afford some of these fees. And I don't think we should be in a position where we're just sort of rigid about recovering for the costs and not taking into account someone's socioeconomic status and whether or not they can afford some of these fees. So I just want, I guess I'm just wanting some reassurance that there is some built-in discretion in some of these fees that to where we can allow for people who have lower level income, that they can still utilize some of our services without worrying about being priced out.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that part. And hopefully that we, as a city, will have something. Maybe Ms. Vesser or any of the department heads or Spolte or or city manager, anyone can let us know that if we do have something. Because I know that even in some of the school bonds that elders can come in and sign off on being responsible for all the measures. So if there's any kind of mechanism similar to that, I think it's bonds or measures, one of the, one of those that the fees that don't burden those on a fixed income in that level. Is there anything in there, Mr. Nevin, Ms. Vesser? In our city?
Well, I mean, I do think that we offer a scholarship program for more of our recreation side of fees. So that allows for that fee waiver within that area specifically. I am not, I don't know about what the other departments are doing, but I do know for like that target group of fees, we have that program.
Mr. Nevin, is there any other, any other departments have any other structure?
Yes, there are departments that advertise programs that where people can apply for a discount based on their income status and other things. But and as you mentioned, and as the vice mayor mentioned, we could, we could look at those and make sure that those are being advertised fully.
Okay, I think, yeah, I thought they were there, but yeah, maybe let the public know. That'd be great. So it sounds like we're moving in the right direction and letting the public know that there are things in place in many of our departments. Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that's admirable about the suggestion made by the vice mayor. And in thinking about it, you know, I try to put myself in the shoes of individuals who may have a problem with these cost recovery fees. Say, for instance, there's a term that's generally used, house rich but cash poor.
Right.
And and some maybe financial situation, as Mr. Nevin alluded to, as to maybe, you know, a social security check. And even that's not enough, but they're barely making it. And to have to file for a permit for a needed repair, that can really cause some havoc. I would ask and hope that maybe staff in each department in the area of cost recovery set aside anywhere from five to ten percent of the adjusted fees and put it into a reserve account so that those who are indigent and can't afford that those funds could be made available to them if they apply for it and they meet the qualifications. That's going to take some work, but I think we would be off to a great start. And just to put these monies on the side as a reserve to show that we are thinking about them. So just my thoughts, I know that's not the matter of this particular proposal that's on the floor right now, but a follow-up for later on so that we could move forward in this and discuss it more would be a great, a great idea to move forward. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Jess Manal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first and foremost, thank you to the staff, Ms. Vesser, and to our consultant Courtney and Director Nevin and this, as the mayor mentioned, comprehensive evaluation of our fees to date. I, I mean, seeing when the last time these fees were increased, it's definitely time to adjust them since it's been quite some time similar to what we did in the past with our business license fee and also our hotel tax. I think every single piece adds up to us being able to provide services for our community. And so seeing how this will support, you know, and bring in revenue, I think it's, it's great, but also to be very mindful as the vice mayor stated earlier, and I think many are in agreement, that there's always the community and equity aspect of ensuring that there is a way for those that that need things done and that it's not a burden or a barrier. And so it looks like that that will be included in the following reports forward. But I think this is a wonderful exercises, exercise long overdue. And so a big, big kudos to the staff for getting this done. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Jess Manal. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing. Can I have a motion to, the motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. I guess Stephen, if you can see if there's anybody here to, I want to discuss this matter.
Yes, for members of the public who wish to comment on this agenda item, please click the raise hand feature. And if you're joining by phone, please, please press star nine to raise your hand. And when you hear your name called, you will have a maximum of two minutes to speak. And when your two minutes have been reached, please wrap up your comments. And I see that we have Sin Thompson with their hand raised. So I will invite them to speak in just a second. Sin Thompson, if you could unmute yourself.
Okay, I think we're good to go, Mayor.
Thank you, Stephen. Can I get a motion to close the public, public hearing?
Motion to close?
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
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 Can we get a roll call vote, please, Ms. City Clerk? To adopt the resolution?
Glenn Sylvester, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution as stated herein.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, and thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Sorry, I was a bit confused. Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Ms. DiGiovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
I just want to say, I forgot to say my comments. So I just want to say thank you for, to the staff, Abby and our consultant for providing this comprehensive review. I think y'all provided reasonable proposals instead of saying like, we're going to have a hundred percent, you know, cost recovery. I think we did it in a more, in a very practical. You know, cost recovery, I think we did it in a more, you know, a very practical and very reasonable way of doing it. And I also like the proposal of having an annual review and benchmark that includes the COLA increases. And it makes sense in that, in that in that approach. And I'll vote yes as well. So motion is passes. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item 19, notice of lien and special assessment to rental property. And we're handing this off to, again, to Director Nevin.
Good evening again, Dr. Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Item number 19 is a public hearing, notice of lien and special assessment to rental property. It is recommended that the city council approve the notice of lien and special assessment to rental property for properties included in the attachment to the agenda report with the County of San Mateo for all unpaid business license rental property taxes and penalties. On June 25th, 2012, the city council entered into, into an agreement with the County of San Mateo to impose lien assessments on real property for unpaid business licenses for rental properties. This agreement was approved by resolution number 12-99. Daily City Municipal Code, Chapter 5.16.050, requires that all commercial and residential rental property pay a license tax based on the gross rental income collected. Notices have been sent to the rental property owners in an effort to bring them into compliance. The past due taxes were due on October 1st, 2021, based on the actual gross rental income reported on their 2020 federal income tax return. Proper notice of the public hearing was published by the city clerk. Notices of intent to lien rental property were mailed to past due and unresponsive property owners included in the attachment. This notice provided the property owners the opportunity to clear the possible lien and validate the information provided by the County of San Mateo. All unpaid taxes will be assessed on the upcoming fiscal year 2023 property tax bill. Projected revenue collection of unpaid business license rental property tax from the County of San Mateo is approximately Staff recommends the city council conduct a public hearing and approve the notice of lien and special assessment to real property for properties listed in the attachment. And staff is available to provide additional information desired by the mayor, councilmembers. Thank you.
Mr. Nevin, we have Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Nevin, would you clarify for those who don't know that a lien is against the property and the city cannot collect on that lien until the property is either sold or refinanced? Is that correct?
This, this lien would be in the form of the information. So this list that was in the attachment or the, is the current list. Anybody that pays past due amounts of taxes that are due will be removed from the list. And that, those businesses that are removed from the list will not be forwarded to the county. The county will take the list that we provide them and then they will add those amounts to the 2023 property tax bills.
Okay, so well, what I'm getting, because this gives me segue to my next question. And that is, will this lien affect the current tenants within the property? Even though it's the owner who has not paid the taxes?
It would not affect tenants.
That's all I need to know. Thank you very much, Mr. Nevin. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Councilmember Jess Manal.
Thank you. I have a question in regards to this list. For instance, if the, the rental tax was paid in between the timeframe from when it needs to be, you're going to send it over to, I think, the county? Is there still a grace period at this time or is this, it has exhausted the grace period?
The, after the notices were sent to all the property owners, there have been property owners since those notices have gone out that have called and, and made payment for their, their taxes. So they, they will be removed from the list as, as they pay. There have been numerous businesses that are already on this list and received a notice that are calling the city now. And then we have a deadline of the end of this month to send the list to the county. So there is a grace period in terms of just paying the tax and being removed from the list. We have discussed internally that we, once the tax is added to the property tax bill, the city would not accept payment on it only because we wouldn't want any properties to pay twice. We can't forward those typically to the county so that they get credited to their accounts. So we would most likely give it back or, or not cash it so that it doesn't come out of the property owner's accounts and they would pay the county through the tax bill.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Councilmember Pamela Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Mr. Nevin, just to clarify, so once this goes to the county, like you said, we'd have a hard deadline, then the county is going to take it over. It'll be on the tax collector over there and then we don't have anything to do with it after, at that, that time. Is that correct? I just want to make sure.
In terms of the collection, correct?
Correct.
Once the revenue is received on the county's end, then that will be forwarded to the city and that would be
Correct.
revenue at that point, yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, we don't process anything. It gets processed over there. And then if any, if the interim, if they, are there any mechanisms for some of these people? Do you know over there to make payments?
Yes, some property owners, as I've mentioned, after receiving the notice, they have been contacting us and paying their tax. So they will, those property owners will be removed from the final list.
Okay, that's great. And then they, then also then we, we can take payments. If it's, if there's something's happened and we don't know each situation. So that was something that you evaluate in your department?
In terms of
Well, I don't know if someone passed in their, yeah. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, the individuals are calling, I would say most of them are actually just paying the tax due. I don't know of any instances of people talking about changes and, you know, ownership or other things like that that where they would not be subject to the tax.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nevin. Or if they had any personal reason why they didn't, so. And either way, the point is that they were noticed and they, at least they know we, they received it.
Right.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Nevin. Thank you.
Sure. We, we also work with individuals in terms of payment as well.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that was the key thing. You know how we are in Daly City. We just want to make sure people can afford. Things happen in people's lives, so just want to make sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
E. Penn. All right, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Glenn Sylvester, motion to open.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right. See, Stephen, is there anybody there? Oh, aye, sir.
Sorry, I went unmute.
So for members of the public who would like to speak in this public hearing, please raise your hand. If you're joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. We have no new hands raised there.
Glenn Sylvester.
I'm sorry.
Oh, we got one. Okay.
Yeah, we have a call in user. So hold on one second as I set that up. Okay, for the call in user, please unmute and you will have two minutes to speak.
Hello, so which line item is this? Hello, is this public comment or not?
This is
Anyone there?
Yes, this is public comment for item 19.
Oh, it's for item 19. Okay, and that's for the liens, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, so let me take a look at that. I just joined a little late here. So this is liens for rental property. That's a tough one. Hmm, I would say, I hate to have liens on properties for human beings. So I would say no, um, special attachment notice of lien and specialism. Yeah, let's not go with the leaves. Let's try to work it out with these folks. Appears the rental properties, looking down 44, 41 on each page. Wow, that's a lot of properties. Holy moly, macaroni, that's 19200. Oh my God. There is 107,000 people. Yeah, I would just say no, simply because, you know, they're playing catch up and it's a little difficult, fiscal year 2021. It's a little bit difficult for people nowadays. I would say vote no on it. Okay, thanks.
Okay, and we also have Sin Thompson. I'm going to come back to you again in case you want to speak on this item. Okay, Mayor, we are good to go.
All right, thank you, Stephen. All right, can I get a motion closed the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
All right, can I get a motion to adopt a resolution by roll call, please?
Glenn Sylvester, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Ms. City Clerk?
Is there a
You would need a second.
Oh, I need a second, sorry about that.
Mr. Buenaventura.
I'll go ahead and second that. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
No, thank you. Ms. D. Giovanni.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. City Clerk. And then, oops, motion passes. Okay, next student, next we have public appearances and oral communications.
Okay, for any members of the public who would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. Okay, we have one raised hand, Mayor, and it's a call in user. Please unmute yourself and you will have two minutes to speak.
All right, so this is now public comment. So hey, happy Halloween, everybody. It's October 31st, right? Somebody's lost base tomorrow. Hey, that's cool. Hey, anyway, a couple of things. So there's really a question about my name. My name's John Daley. I was born in 1800s in Boston, came out here, opened my, opened up my farmlands to those who survived the earthquake and fought refuge. Anyway, the Team Daley here, Team Daley community here, we've been sending you guys emails, emails to me and information requested about FOIA requests and information and internal and external cameras and all that good stuff. And obviously we've been demanding resignations, but people are still sitting up there in front of my field. But pretty much not cool. So, so just a couple of things. So September 13th, what we really saw was racism by Rod and Manalo, obviously rented space, used space. And really the raised man really acting up about, you know, he's supposed to be the big brother of all and really stopped. He hasn't really stopped the racism, but however, we came across a great individual, a great servant to the community. Most recently, even during the weekend. So I don't know if you know of him. First name, Mike. Oh, shoot, what's his name? He's actually the county manager in San Mateo County, really great guy. You know what he does? We send him an email and even on his time off, he responds. He's like really cool and he got us in a really good mood. So it's good to be responsive towards community members. Also, I do, I mean, we joined late and we're in the, you know, running around at the gym and everything, but didn't see Lani, so I want to say congratulations to her. She's doing a great job. I'd like to see her. We'd like to see her as the city manager. I think she'd do a really great job. I think, you know, the confidence level, I'm sure she has that and we had been. And September 13th, 2021 was a very big day for her as she filled her head up.
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay, so yeah, make sure you reach out to her. I didn't see her. I'll send her an email. Tell her congratulations from the new position. It'd be great to have her in to reach out to, to work with the community as well. Thanks, bye.
That concludes public comment, Mayor.
Thank you, Stephen. Up next, appointments, any board commission, membership committee appointments? Do you have any appointments? Seeing none, move on to the next, to council committee reports from April 11th to July 11th, 2022. That's a year.
Mr. Mayor, did you say April 11th through July 11th?
Says April 11th to July 11th, 2022.
Wow, that's a long period. Okay, good luck.
Kind of like, oh, Councilmember Jess Manal, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would have to go back to my notes on April. But, Mr. Mayor, if this is city council committee report, had the pleasure of working with you and getting an update with the staff and the development committee in regards to a parcel that is currently, used to be the Burlington store. And there's a proposal for it to be some housing with some, a mixed use development with some ground floor retail. And so that's something that was pretty exciting to see, given the amount of units that would be onsite and also the potential of BMRs within that within, within the development. And then it was really wonderful that staff had an update or a list on all of the development that is in the pipeline. Also, those have been entitled. And it was just a good snapshot of where we're at in Daly City and what, you know, what has been halted and also what can also be moving forward. And obviously it's a different time in kind of the market. But to see what is in the pipeline is so important. So I want to thank staff for providing the exhaustive list. And it's always exciting to see some of the much needed housing and also commercial development, which I will leave up to you, Mr. Mayor, to speak about, which I think you made a mention in regards to the commercial property that is in the pipeline. So I hand it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Jess Manalo. We have a lot of projects and I just want to say thank you to all the staff, Tatum, Michael, and the rest of the crew for making this Daly City like be able to, to work. And one of the questions I've been getting from a lot of folks in the public is, you know, what's going to happen to that old slot in the Old Pacific Super off of South Gate? And, you know, there's going to be a new grocery store that's going to be coming in. It's still in, in the works of everything, but we do have another grocery store coming in. I believe the applicant is Seafood City. So if anybody's familiar with Seafood City, they are down the street in South San Francisco. And they're going to be redeveloping that whole parcel and reviving that area. So I know there's been a lot of folks from seniors to young folks that have been asking and reviving that area. So I know there's been a lot of folks from seniors to, um, young folks that have been asking about, you know, um, this wa- this was my supermarket. I need to find a place that, you know, is accessible to my house and I can walk to this place. And now they have something down the pipeline that we can look forward to. So, um, again, thank you to staff and for making this work. Um, Councilmember Manalo, I'm, I'm trying to look for my notes. I couldn't remember the other, other things that we, we put, we had down, but then I know there's a lot of things that are coming down the pipeline. Um, we're gonna be on Wednesday, this Wednesday, we're gonna be, um, raising more of the walls at, um, development in, in the Bay Shore. Um, so that's, that's a big thing. Um, and I can't remember the other thing that we have.
No worries. That was a real huge one. Mid-Penn is, is huge, Mr. Mayor. And then we talked about the parcel right there on Goth Street and just how it's kind of, uh, been vacant for quite some time, and hopefully that developer, um, you know, is able to move forward with that. Um, and then we also were able to speak on our, our own land, um, which has the affordable housing opportunity, that site, because, um, and how, hopefully, um, uh, the consultants and the developers are able to reconfigure it to a way where we could start moving forward. It's a tricky site, um, right, because of the grading, but, um, you know, we got an update from staff and hopefully with the reconfiguration, um, we get that moving along. I think that's the one that, yeah, I remembered.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it was very productive and we got, we were talking about a lot of things and we also, um, got a lot in a short amount of time, right, Mayor? So, thank you.
No, thank, yeah, thank you. Um, the other council committee reports, um, let's see here, um, on July sixth, um, myself and the Vice Mayor and the City Manager were in attendance. We had a subcommittee updated this, the manager that the city will continue to have, Don, Donald Williamson, Adela firm, Liebert, Cassidy, and Whitmore, as the city's lead negotiator for all upcoming negotiations for all bargaining units. The subcommittee further advised the city manager, that Human Resource Director and the Finance Director are to work directly with the lead negotiator to provide support through the city's contract with L C D, L C W in furtherance of ongoing labor negotiations. And then the city attorney's office will administer the L C W contract for the city. And I think, let's see here. I believe that's about it. Oh, actually, I have another one. I have, um, man, my notes are all scattered everywhere. Let's see, I'll report on the next one. I, I can't find the rest of my notes here. Yeah. Okay. Are there any other, um, council committee reports? If not, we'll be going to move on to item twenty-one, uh, city council reports. Are there any city council reports? Vice Mayor Ray Buenaventura.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, um, announce again that, uh, we're gonna have the Alice Peña Bulos Memorial Highway sign unveiling. That's gonna happen this coming Saturday, July sixteenth at one P M. Uh, there are two signs that were put up. One is on the, um, intersection of basically John Daley and Highway thirty-five. The other one, which is where the ceremony will be, is at the intersection of King Drive and Route Route thirty-five. So, um, uh, I would like to invite people. You just have to go to that area, navigate to the corner of ten fifty King Drive in Daly City, and you should be able to, um, see us out there. So this is a great tribute to one of our, our great leaders, uh, Alice Bulos, and so, um, there should be something special and you don't want to miss that. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there any other, um, city council reports? Let's see here. Vice Mayor, you still have your hand up? You have another item to report on?
No, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Okay. Okay, seeing, um, that we have no other city council reports, we'll move on to staff. Are there any staff reports?
No additional reports tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay. Okay. Leads us to our last, um, for, um, adjournment in memory, and we have one. We have, uh, Joanie, Joanie Ison, Daly City Police Department Officer Brandon Gill's mother-in-law. And with that, I'd like to offer a moment of silence.
Mayor?
Yes.
Would you mind, uh, closing also for the tragedy of the July fourth, um, parade? Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
No, thank you for the reminder.
Yeah.
So many things have been happening.
Yes.
All right, everybody. Um, thank you, everybody. Everybody be safe and we'll see you again at the end of July. Bye-bye, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.